All right ladies, it's 10:30 Monday morning, July 11th. We call this regular session of Suncro County Commissioners' Court meetings. That's our order. If we will, let us rise and before we do the pledge and prayer, let's take a moment of silence for the folks in Dallas and just America as a whole. I think the whole America needs just a little bit of help. Thank you folks, let's go ahead and join in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the United States flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state of God, one state under God, one indivisible.
Dr. Rick Lindberger, he's the pastor at church, will give the indications.
Thanks sir.
Let's go back again. Lord, we do thank you for the day that you've given us, thank you for the opportunities we have in life, and even as it's already been spoken, Lord, we do pray for this nation, we pray for the Dallas Police Force, we pray for all of the, those, Lord, that, the families that have been involved, those that have lost loved ones, we ask today for your comfort and your peace and encouragement to them. We pray for the leadership of this nation, Lord, and just acknowledge and recognize that we need your strength, we need your wisdom, and we need your grace during these days. And I just pray, Father, for the leadership of our country, that you would supply that grace, that there would be listening ears and folks that are open, Father. Thank you today for this community and for the leadership of this community, and, Lord, your word says that if we ask wisdom, that you give wisdom, and we pray for wisdom and leadership today for those who will lead. I pray for this community, for your blessings on it, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thanks sir. All right. Item number one, approve the previous minutes, Commissioners' Court meeting. Is there any time and chance for any of those?
Thirteen twenty-seven, June twenty-seven.
I believe that is correct.
I'm showing three meetings for our view, June thirteenth and approved June twenty-seven.
I believe that is correct.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I have a motion by John and a second by Kenneth. Any further questions, discussion, problems? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Item four, discuss FEMA funds and disaster projects. What about you, Duane? How about you, Duane? Could you make sure that mic's turned on for the court, please?
It is turned on.
Thanks sir.
Basically, I want to come and get to courts, see where we're going to go with the disasters that occurred in June, as far as County Road 1008 and the bridge at the golf course. If we don't put these back to pre-disaster conditions, FEMA is not going to reimburse us the seventy-five percent on the repairs. So, I just need to know if we're going to move forward with the road repairs to pre-disaster conditions and the bridge out at the golf course.
Duane, I'm under the impression that due to, that we were to rebuild that bridge, or we're still have the potential to lose it again, but if we mitigate it with an alternative plan, that they would compensate for it also.
Correct. And they will reimburse us up to seventy-five percent, and that is the cleanup and the rebuilding. And we can move it as a mitigation project, we can move it to a different location, higher on the golf course, that will prevent it from washing out again, or hopefully will prevent it from washing out again. But the thing is, it has to be put back to pre-disaster conditions, so I'm wanting to make sure that the court is good with spending the other twenty-five percent before we proceed any further, both on 1008 and the bridge at the golf course.
The alternatives that we looked at for the bridge at the golf course possibly would include modifications to an existing bridge that would allow the larger equipment to go across, or a low water crossing. There's two locations, one was a low water crossing historically, so we would like to get an estimate on cost for the modifications for that alternative plan.
Okay.
We need three bids for the removal of the damaged bridge.
Well, and that brings up another point, you were talking about getting estimates. This goes for both the road and for the bridge. We need to make sure we get an outside contractor to come in, I believe you were pretty to those conversations, and bid, and get bids on the road, and we also need to get bids on the bridge. And that way, the outside contractor may see things that the county does not, as far as damages and the possibility of what it would take to rebuild, but we can use those estimates, those estimates from the contractors, and then we can use our own people to build or rebuild. But we have to use, we need to get estimates from outside.
It was stated that we would need three bids?
Yes.
For comparison purposes.
Yes.
How about roads, where we going to head on roads?
Yes, we're going.
We're going to put them back, correct.
All right.
And same with the bridge.
We need to get estimates on that to make that determination.
Okay, do mine and see what's involved.
Well, we have, we have until July twenty-eighth. We've got to get them submitted by July twenty-eighth, and then the work will need to be completed within six months.
How do I understand on the bridge, but on the road, which we have got to rebuild?
Well, you don't have to, we can submit a bid, an estimate on our workers doing the work, and then that's all the money that we're going to get, is the seventy-five percent. But if we have a contractor come in and estimate it, and it comes in at a hundred thousand dollars more than what the county would cost to fix it, there's a chance that we can get all of that money, but yet the county does the work, so we're actually receiving a little extra money, but they said that that money has to go to mitigation projects in the county. It cannot go back in general fund. The extra funds above and beyond what it costs to repair the road will have to go to mitigation.
Well, I've got other questions though. Same one with the removal of the.
Same as the bridge. With the, with the bridge, more than likely because they came out and they estimated the damages of the bridge at over three hundred thousand dollars, that's going to be written up as a large project. Anything over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is considered a large project. Let's say they write it up at three hundred thousand dollars, but at the end it comes up to four hundred thousand dollars. Well, because it was written as a large project, we will receive seventy-five percent of the entire amount. So we receive seventy-five thou, seventy-five percent of the four hundred thousand dollars. Now, on a small project such as the road, we only get seventy-five percent of the total, no matter what, no matter what it comes out to be.
Any other questions or discussions for Duane? Get the price and get back with us, and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Duane, appreciate it. Item number five, let's go, let's take action, close the Expo Center effect at the end of the fiscal year, and I'm sure there's some folks here that probably are going to want to speak about this. I'm, I'm not going to be disrespectful, I don't mean disrespect when it comes across that way. Let's, let's all be respectful of each other, let's not try to talk over each other as we move forward in this process, all right? What I'll do is, if you know whoever wants to talk, try to talk, I'll give them three minutes each, up to thirty minutes total. So, you know, if you've got one person straight, spoken person, you want to speak thirty minutes, great, if you want to break it up, two people, fifteen minutes, ten people, three minutes, however you want to do it, I'm willing to do that. I want to go over a few things that we've been through, because some of y'all may not know, these hearings started in March, they've all been publicized, they've all been open meetings, so we're not discussing anything here that hasn't been discussed in other open meetings. But I want to give you some ideas on other departments, what we're going through as a whole. Genealogy last year lost one full-time employee, they've been working off volunteers and one part-time employee. This year, they'll probably lose that part-time employee. The library lost one full-time employee or will this year. D. Rowland is looking at layoffs in their areas, they just don't know how many yet. One department will be totally absorbed, one department will go totally away, that budget for that department will be absorbed, not totally, part of it will be saved, into the fire department and into the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department will be totally looked at after the first year, when we see where the new sheriff is and who the new chief deputy is. It's not fair for us to go in there and charter a budget totally apart, with a new gentleman coming in, who that person may be, and what they're going to have to deal with when they get in there. So they probably need about six to eight months to look at that budget and see where we can go from there. Senior Senator Committee on Aging, we've had two or three discussions with them, Pat Baker and I believe, Ms. Metr, Pam Baker, I'm sorry, Pam Baker and I believe Ms. Metr. They're also being asked to cut into their budget, see as deep as they possibly can go, and still, still operate. So now that'll bring us to the Expo. I know somebody out here won't speak, so who's the first one that'd like to speak? Any questions? There you go, sir. And like I say, let me figure out how to work this down, once you get up there, turn on the mic, then I will see if I can figure this out, then get you going. And if you will, sir, just, just walk up to the microphone, state your name, and who you're with and what you're representing.
How much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, sir.
There you go. And I'll start it right now, so, there you go.
Steve Williams, and, all right, thank you for inviting us, comment, I think that's the court. I'm very highly qualified, having been a CEO for quite a few years dealing with profit and loss, and I understand the operation of profit centers and what things mean to communities, I've been involved with economic development, and very successful programs of raising funding to help facilities such as the Granbury Airport, Congressman Edward funding and so forth, outside funding, to help keep those kind of facilities operating and profitable and safe. And I'm going to cut to the chase and tell you that I think you've got a gemstone. I have no personal economic interest in any of these activities at the center, I'm part of a club that uses the center once a year, and I actually invest money in that myself just for the enjoyment of the sport. So, I have no economic interest, but I will tell you, having traveled every state in the United States and virtually every continent in the world, you've got a gemstone, you've got a perfect facility. I realize you have budget considerations, obviously. What I suggest you look at is form a committee, and see if you can find ways to make this, this facility work. If you close this facility down, it'll probably never open it again, I can say that, having been all over the world. Most of the arenas and facilities of this nature are outstanding, and they're a pride of the community, and they make money. I think you've got an asset, and no criticism, you've got great management, but this asset is underutilized. Two-sevenths of the week is not a way to run any kind of enterprise, I'm in the airline business, you don't keep an airplane running all the time, you don't make money. That facility needs to run seven days a week. That can be done if you add a conference center capabilities to it, some kind of a conference center. In the aviation world, they have a lot of small companies that make parts of airplanes, black boxes that sell for a hundred thousand dollars each, they can use a facility of that size as a conference center. And you bring in thirty or forty vendors, and that attracts people, and those people all stay in hotels, they all dine at the restaurants, whereas the horse people, and we're horse people, fifty percent of our, our participants have horse trailers, they, they prepare their own meals, they sleep in their own trailer. The other fifty percent use the hotels, I know from our own experience. So, I think if you could look at this as an addition of a conference center, or somehow invest some funding, I'll just touch on that before I close, to add a conference capability to the center, you'd see the utilization go to five or six days a week, and I think you'd find out that'd be the pride of the county and the city, and you bring in a lot of business, a lot of activities. I'd suggest you form a small working committee, you'll examine the ideas, volunteer committee, and put this together before you really make your final decisions. And I think you'll find that this facility can be an attraction. If you don't have this, I think you're going to lose a lot of economic impact, for sure. And I said I've been on the economic committee, so you've got a valuable asset, you need to put it to better use. If you can't find the wherewithal to do that, maybe you find a partner of some kind, and I know there are boundaries regarding the Hill County College and the schools, but people make laws and make rules, you can adjust those if it's the benefit of the participants to the, to the point where you can find a, maybe a consortium that will make this work to your benefit. If that doesn't work, I would also go and talk to some of the main large associations, all of these organizations, whether it be a horse association or any other association that wants to use that facility, they have a lot of people, a lot of connections, a lot of network, they might help you bring in funding and so forth.
Thank you, sir.
That's it, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, appreciate your comment, thank you. Anybody else? Come on up, Terry.
No, Danny, I, I don't think it's a secret what the problem is.
Right.
It's the tax issue with luminant, yeah. And I, instead of, I mean, I can stand up there already and talk about this deal, but I want to know what you guys are learning about maybe the end, if there's going to be an end on the tax issue with luminant as of right now.
What we seeing right now?
I think, we do that before we go any further.
And if any of these folks want to jump in and help me out here, Terry, where we're at is, you know, we're in the appeal process, which they lost, they lost in bankruptcy court in October of last year, they lost in district court here in February, they had the final ruling on May, luminant's lost every time they went to court, but they've chose to appeal. That may wind up in Waco, I know it'll wind up in Waco, but that can take twelve to eighteen months before we have the outcome. They paid fifty percent of their taxes this year, they'll just rub between eight and nine million, they paid an over four million, is that correct? So, obviously you can see we started out this year as a deficit. I'm told they're gearing up to sue us again for 2016. There will be a meeting tomorrow of West Roland, the appraisal district, and lawyers with some luminant folks to see what can be done, if there's anything that can be done. It's not that Suncro County has not been willing to try to work, it's just they have chose to exhaust all their legal ramifications before they take another route. And I hate to, I'm not trying to point fingers at any one group or be disrespectful to any one group, but, you know, they're crippling the hospital, they're crippling the county. I'm sure it's a goal, we'll see, we'll see what happens tomorrow, we'll see what happens. And Terry, I'm not trying to be around the bush, that's just.
No, 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 that, I, I just thought, you know, if anybody's in here that doesn't know why all this is going on today and what that number five item is, that is a big reason for it.
I'm told, but still have an ARV hearing on the fourteenth, I believe it is, at 1:00 PM, that, you know, they rendered about 1.5 billion last year, and they chose to pay on about 960 million. Now, they lost in court to 2.2 million, billion plus fuel, which is about 232, 236 billion, okay? 2.36 billion. So, I understand this year, none of this is in concrete yet, but they're probably going to render on about twenty-five percent of what they paid on last year. So that tells you that their goal may be to come in under 300 million or so for this year, when they lost in court at 2.2 billion. So, it doesn't make sense, and I'm not trying to ramble, I'm trying to make it as, as open as I possibly can.
Yeah, and I didn't expect you, I didn't expect you to know the answer.
Yeah, there's been a.
I just wondered if there was an end in sight.
No. Now, if they, they do have the option to appeal to the Supreme Court of Texas, if they were to lose in Waco, in the last fifteen years, the Supreme Court has only heard of value, no cases on valuation, they have heard property cases, but not to do with valuation of the property, okay? They have rejected anything that comes to them on valuation. So, our hope is, if they do lose, they appeal in Waco, and they go to Supreme Court, that it gets rejected, it's not, it's heard by the Supreme Court. So what we, what this court could be looking at is, they get their taxes in 2018 for 2015, and they, they get their taxes in 2019 for 2016. So what we do up until that point is, we live off what we do get, plus what we do have in reserve, plus the, you know, we have about roughly 600 million on the books, other real property, you know, folks like yourselves that pay taxes, plus businesses above and beyond the power plant, so whatever, but, you know, 600 million, when you divide that by a hundred times your tax rate, doesn't give you a whole lot, when you're used to working off nine, 10 million in your budget. And sort of address a couple items that you mentioned, Terry well knows, in 2014, we had some meetings trying to go different directions to see maybe what we could do, I heard you were talking about different things, managed different things. 2015, we had another meeting, brought a group together, Mike Daniels, Terry Starnes, I think Coe, me, myself, Frank, the auditor, I believe you were there, trying to discuss back in 2015, different avenues, different income, places to go. This year, I met with the city, talked to city council, the mayor, the city administrator, exactly what you said, to see maybe if the city would be involved in doing some type of convention center along with the arena, to try to keep everything on board, that helps the school, that helps the school with their prime, that helps the school with their
4H.
Yeah, their youth fair, 4H, things like that. And I know this, I've heard it said many times, I want the Expo closed. That's not true, no matter what this group thinks, I think it's a great place, I think it is an excellent location, I think it needs to be utilized, but right now, I don't think Suncro County needs to be paying for it. I never really thought Suncro County should be paying for it, we lost money for 23 years there, but this is personal opinion, guys, this, I'm not speaking for the court, this is my personal opinion. It's a great place, needs to be utilized, it's just not currently how it's being funded. Anybody else? Come on up, Brenda. Now you're going to make me work this out again. You going to speak for three minutes?
No, I'm not. My, my comment is, if we close the Expo at the fiscal year, is that October 1st?
October 1st, yes.
My question is, what about those groups and organizations that have already booked the Expo? Is that not a contract? And if it is a contract, will we not have repercussions if we break those contracts? I mean, that's just a thought, that are we saving money if we get sued by some of these groups? And maybe they won't go that far, I don't know, but, you know, we're putting some people in a real bind if they are already booked for October.
Yes.
And we're closing it, they might not have any place to go, and they're certainly not going to be very happy with us, and my opinion would be that we would never, ever get them back if we were able to reopen it. But as this gentleman said, once it's closed, that might be the end of it, period. But, just questioning about what would happen with the contracts that we already have.
Okay. Frank and Kenneth will have to help me here, I'm told most of them do not have deposits or.
Oh no, there's quite a few people that have contracts, yes sir. I, I can't answer the question of who would sue and who wouldn't, I have no, I, I can't speculate that.
And that's a two-way street, right? Because we have groups like the Waco that cancel on us and walk away.
Um, that's, I think that's happened twice in the four years that I've been here.
So that is a two-way street?
Yes.
Okay. So, Brenda, I know that didn't answer your question, but there are.
Just throwing that out as, as a thought.
Yes.
That was one of the first questions that we wanted to know about, what our opinions were, and I don't know what we still know.
Anybody else want to speak before the court starts deliberating on this matter?
I'll say something.
All right, you bet. I apologize, I soon know your name.
Hi, I'm Jeff Honey.
Yeah, I'm.
I'm in the horse business, I built a pack, business first.
You're welcome to step up to the podium, sir, if you want, and I'll try to work this again, all right?
I'll go take all three minutes. But you know, I've been connected with the youth fair, I've been connected with 4H FFA, and all the horse events that we get, and it's such a great facility, and I've talked to people all over the state, and the first thing they tell me is, yeah, we've been to Ropen at the Expo Center, we've been to a burrow race, they know the Expo Center first, then fossil rim, and then dinosaurs. And if we lose it, we'll never get it back, and it's such an important piece of this community. I use it all the time, and I'm one of the guys that, when Frank's not using it, I ride my horse in the back, or something like that. I don't use the city parks, I don't walk around, but I do use that facility. All I do is put foot cranks down, I don't hurt it, I stay out of his way, but there's a lot of people that really enjoy that facility. You know, and I know with the tax burdens and stuff, but we've got to figure out something. But, it's one of the greatest facilities in this part of Texas. If we ever lose it, of course, we won't get it back. So, that's just my two cents, but I know the kids enjoy it, maybe one of the best youth fairs there is, as far as a facility. I don't know where we go, if we close it, so, it's just my two cents.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Mr. Alden, anybody else?
I'm just going to speak for a second.
Okay.
I have a no-brainer, common sense. It's just like the ripple effects that it's going to have on the whole community, down to the tire shops. I mean, I had a barrel racer call me the other day, had a, come into the jog pot and said, I just had a blowout outside of town, where can I, who can fix it for me? She was by herself, you know, the waitresses, the tips, I understand y'all are on a tight budget and things are a problem, but it's going to affect everybody. The laundromats, the dry cleaners, I mean, when they're here, when they're here for the weekend and they have time to kill, they go out to fossil rim, they go out to the dinosaur park. There's people that came to the, to the state that said, I wouldn't even know Glenrose existed if it wasn't for the Expo, this is a great place. She came for this show, and we found out what, we're going to come back. You know, it's just, there's just a big impact that it has on more than just itself. And I know that's kind of just common sense, but, I don't know.
Anything you need to say?
Yeah, I felt like I needed to.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. I believe, sorry ma'am, I do not know your name either.
I'm Jennifer, I'm honored. Most people don't know me, but I worked for six years at Diamond W facility in Alborito.
Yes ma'am.
When we sold out and the arena was shut down at Diamond W, the town lost a lot of money, and that is something to look over. This town, if, if the Expo gets shut down, will lose money, because first and foremost, this town is known in the United States for having this complex. You've got the American come in, that is one of the biggest money earners in the sport of rodeo. Two qualifiers, that is a big deal. If we play off of the events that we have, and we get the community involved, you could really do what he says to do. But it needs to, the money needs to look at, y'all need to look at where, if y'all shut this down, the revenue that's going to be lost.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Anybody? Before we start deliberating up here? Come on up, Sam. I know I need to set timer on you, Sam. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, first off, I am Sam Moody, and I am speaking as a citizen of the city of Glenrose, not as mayor, okay, as an individual citizen. I live up on Texas Drive, right up from the Expo, so anytime there's anything going on at the Expo, I get to, to drive by and, and through. And a lot of times, there, there have been events, there were, that place is absolutely packed, okay? The Joe Bieber September show last year for Labor Day weekend was one of them, where it was just jam-packed. However, more often than not, it isn't that packed, number one. Number two, this gentleman here, I wholeheartedly agree with what he said, that facility is way, way underutilized. So, if we're going to work through this problem and keep the Expo open, and I agree with what folks have said about the importance of the Expo to this community, okay? But we have got to, as, as citizens of the county, to get the best out of this facility, push and, and really focus on broadening what that facility is used for. It is not used for congressmen, and it could be, and those are big draws from, and, and would increase the income and the revenue to this, to this area immensely. And I would ask the, the court if any consideration or discussion or whatever has been done with respect to getting a, going into a private. or whatever has been done with respect to getting a, going into a private-public venture, and I don't know the mechanics behind that, but I do know that Cleaver, their sports facility that they're preparing to build, okay? They own it, but it's gonna be a private organization that runs it, okay? Um, the other suggestion that I would make is, if we manage to keep the expo open, that a, a panel that continually advises, from all aspects, a volunteer panel continually advising, from the conference aspect, from the horse aspect, there are horse shows of a higher quality that would draw a lot of people. Hunter jumper, you know, the competitions for best of, those kind of things. And I probably went over my three minutes, my apologies.
No, you took a twenty second.
No, pull it in. That's my point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. of merit, thank you. And here again, just, I'm speaking more as a citizen right now than I am as part of this court, okay? And Terry, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but what we ran into, and jump up, correct me if I'm wrong, in 2014, when we met and talked, in 2015, when we met and talked, in 2016, nobody that we could find at that time was willing to step up to the plate and put their money, or willing to lose the money that the county has lost for twenty-three years. Am I correct there?
You're absolutely correct, because after I got a copy of the budget and took back and sent out at my desk in about fifteen minutes, I could tell you what my decision was. And, and you know, at the time, uh, it was a, we were talking about a management
Right.
Group, not a company, a group.
And in 2015, we talked, when Frank was in the room, we talked, we tried to even broaden our horizons to get a different group involved. And we still couldn't find anybody that was willing to put their money to take a chance to lose what the county has lost up to this point.
Yeah.
Now I'm speaking as a citizen, I'm speaking, now I better go back the other direction. Does anybody else, anybody else wanna speak at all, say anything at all? Before we deliberate? Come on up, Mike.
I just got a question, could you let us know what that is? That amount that you're talking about?
Well
Per year or
Just for, basically, these three gentlemen here have done very well. When they, when these three gentlemen came on board, county was putting about a million dollars into it every year. With the help of Frank and these three gentlemen, the reason I say that, because Dawn and I just came on board the last eighteen months. Uh, they have cut it down to where we were gonna allocate a little over five hundred thousand this year. We've got about, what, two hundred fifty-one into it at this time, right?
Two oh three five at this time, and we got budgeted four hundred and nine thousand.
Four hundred and nine thousand is what we set aside for this year up to October first. So
When I started, it lost almost nine hundred thousand dollars four years ago. Last year, I lost three hundred and ten.
So over the twenty-three years, you're talking about several million? Several million dollars. Frank, did I better start it down? Hang on just a second.
I just, I think it's important for everybody to know, my utilities are a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars a year. Divide that by three sixty-five.
No, go ahead.
That's five hundred dollars a day, okay? Whether the lights are on or not, it's five hundred dollars a day. The problem with our facility is it's aging, okay? Through the tune of, you know, the utilities. If we would have retrofitted the lights three or four years ago, that would save me seventy thousand dollars a year. Okay, so now, like I said, last year, we lost a little over three hundred thousand, that would have been a little over two hundred thousand. I have one main arena. I'm competing with facilities that have two main arenas for World Series ropings. World Series right now, and has been huge. I don't make my money renting the building. The building rents for fifteen hundred dollars a day. I make my money renting stalls and shavings. Okay, when we have events that don't bring any equine in, I don't make any money. If I don't make twenty thousand dollars a weekend, twenty thousand dollars, we lose money. There's only maybe fifteen times a year I'll make over twenty thousand dollars to pay my bills. I need equine events, baby equine events. Renting the building for fifteen hundred dollars a day does not pay my bills. You can rent it for fifteen hundred dollars a day for seven days a week, it ain't paying my bills. It needs to be stalls and shavings. That's what it's all about. I deal with an over-twenty-year aging facility. I've got eighty thousand dollars that constantly goes out, whether it's fixing AC, HVAC, or vehicles, or you name it. I don't have AC in any vehicle I have, and we don't complain about it because we have a vehicle. I'm dealing with an aging facility. I'm very proud of what we've done for the last four years. I've closed the gap a lot. Am I ever gonna close it under its current configuration? No, I'm not. A conference center will help. A conference center will keep things going, will keep people coming into town. But it's not about people coming into town, it's about my bottom line to all you folks. I get that, I know that. If you close the expo today, you can't open it in two years. If you wanna save four hundred thousand dollars amongst the other cuts, you can revitalize that in a year or in two years, but you can't bring the expo back.
Thank you, Frank. What I want? All right, I guess we'll bring it back to the court. Thank y'all, everybody for your input.
Right, uh, we, we can't make that four million dollars if we need for this budget to happen. Uh, I'm a private enterprise person. I don't, I know the law allows county government to be in private enterprise or even a development. But I can't see as a taxpayer out of the county, how the expo benefits like it does the city. We don't get any benefit, we don't get hotel tax out of the week. Well, what if we, we have outside, paying breakfast, it's what, thirty-five thousand? Compared to what, three hundred and eighty?
Yes, sir.
Three hundred of hotel tax, sales tax. If anyone needs this, the city does. And I understand they pay county taxes too. But they're the one that benefits the county, and we've tried it for twenty-three years. Uh, Frank's done everything in the court, he has asked him to politics and business, doesn't he?
Anybody else? Comment, discussion? Is your mind going dumb?
Bottom line is, we've helped another entity in the community that is in serious high ankle shape. And this court has not looked down that road to get the county in the same position. We have to cut, and we need to cut pretty seriously in several places. Frank has done a terrific job, he's improved it, he's helped it. But he just made a statement under the condition, the way it's run, we will never be in the black.
Any other comments? Anybody?
You know, I don't think the court in general wants to see it go away. Because of us being this four million dollar town, we've got to start looking today at every item, everything that we can do to help that four million dollar town. Personally, I, I hate to see it just go away totally. But our county taxpayers in general are not getting anything out of it. There are a few businesses that are. But taxpayers that do talk to me about it, say, why are you feeding money into something that does not pay for itself? I just, I just feel like that we can't wait till next year to see what happened with the power plant to do something about all of our budget. And if this will help it, but I also feel like we need to follow right up behind whatever decision is today to go out for bids or leasing or something. And see, see what, see if we get anything coming to us.
John? One county, one town. Are we partners or we not? Years ago, it was decided that the city would get all the sales tax, the hotel tax, correct on it? My point being is that where we find ourselves in a economic situation that we didn't anticipate would happen this quick. We have been cutting budgets for the last few years, anticipating a devaluation in the plant. The logarithmic step that it took this year, or appears to have taken this year, we did not anticipate, and it would be extremely difficult to cut a budget other than what we're having to deal with right now, to deal with. I propose that we, I suggest, the RFP is a good process. The MOU with the city for operation of this facility until this calms down and we figure out where this money's coming from, and how we will, what the results will be of the lawsuits that are being appealed at this time. To shut it down, to vote to shut it down today, I, I think closes the door on dialogue to find a way that to keep the money flowing that's not such a burden on the county. RFPs, MOUs, the city, I don't know if you can raise your sales tax or not any higher than we can right now. But there has to be a way that we can keep this thing going and remove the burden that we're, we're feeling right now.
Anything else, gentlemen?
I would add, just in all fairness, the original proposal that the judge presented or, or floated, uh, I think in the last budget meeting, was to cap the subsidy from the county at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the expo, so that we could limit our exposure. I think in all fairness, you need to understand that a vote to close does not mean budget goes to zero. You can't take a facility like that and assume that it's gonna be zero. We're gonna have post-employment costs, we're a reimbursing employer for unemployment. Obviously, a facility of that size is going to need, we're gonna have to continue to insure it, obviously. Repairs and maintenance, things of that nature. Parking lot has to be maintained, otherwise weeds start rolling up. So I, I want to make sure that everyone is understanding that a vote to close does not take this number to zero. That there will be probably, I would still probably say, we probably have to put two hundred and fifty thousand in the budget to cover this next year, simply because of the higher unemployment costs in the first year and things of that nature.
So we voted, many savings don't come to what, about the second year or so?
Second, third, yes, sir. Uh, no, this, this year, Commissioner Holden, we got four hundred and eighty-seven twenty-six budgeted to, to transfer into the
Total, we, we gotta set aside a million.
Excuse me?
You, you got to hear a million more.
Well, that's their total budget, but they're, they're earning other fees. Yeah, I'm talking about
But we got a budget, we
Right, but the, but the actual cost to the county is all that. So if there's not groups coming in there, and we don't have employees, then obviously all those expenses will decrease as well. I mean, utilities will be something, but it won't be as high as, I mean, we're not gonna be cooling the big arena and things of that nature. The utilities are gonna be to, to make sure that all the systems continue to operate. Security systems, hard winter, we keep some heat on, things of that nature. So, uh, you know, it, it'll be a sizable decrease, to be sure. But, uh, well, it'll still cost the county probably close to, to two hundred and fifty thousand this first year.
Figures that you have in hand, do you anticipate the expo losing about four hundred thousand this year?
Uh, not at this point. Uh, remember, that was a, that was a number we did so that we could balance the budget based upon what we anticipated expenses. Uh, I think we'll have some leftover funds there that we can put into the expo's reserve like we did last year. Uh, it's still too early to, to make projection. I mean, we're coming into probably some of their leaner months, July, August. Then they, they usually have a pretty decent September, so we'll, we'll know a little bit further into the summer. They had, they had a good June. If you looked at your report, you know, they, they had a pretty decent June, about sixty thousand coming in.
Also, I'd like to say, no matter what happens here today, the ideas that have been brought up, any group that's willing to come forward and come up with ideas, proposals, things that we can put on future courts to talk about, no matter what decision happens today, I mean, we need to move forward that facility some way or another. So, I'd just like to put that out there to the city, any other group, any local boys back there, any local groups, but we can sit down and talk about it and then bring it to the court discussing. Anything else, gentlemen?
Can I ask one question?
You bet.
I just want to I'm just back here kind of doing figures in my mind. So Frank said he lost three-ten last year. And Brian says if it's closed, it's still gonna cost you two hundred and fifty.
The first year, right.
So you're talking about sixty thousand dollars difference if you keep it open.
Year or one? Second year is where you actually see your savings.
Okay, I just wanna make sure
That's cool.
I'm understanding.
No problem. Anything else, gentlemen? Well, where do we want to go with this today before we move on?
Yeah, I'd like to ask John, what, uh, he's talking about proposals, what
I think, I don't wanna close the door. I think that if we go out from RFP, you for operation, organization, somebody to run it, lease it. I don't know the, the magnitude of what an RFP, an MOU with the city to take over the operation of this for a two-to-three-year period until we get this thing settled with Lumina and know where we stand. We have a new advertising agency that we need to really hammer to see if we can increase revenues substantially off advertising. I thought we might be able to raise sales tax, but we can't do that.
Taxes are another issue, but we, that's for a different meeting.
Yep, yep. So that's what, that's where I'm thinking, Mary.
Yes, Judge, you mentioned taxes, and we have other obligations that we have to provide services for.
Yes. And those obligations are looking at cuts and layoffs also. By any interruption?
No, it's, uh, considerable. And I guess I'm gonna say that if we vote today to say, if we vote to close it today, you just closed it without exploring these other potential options, same there, that will be there.
And not wanting to argue, John, in all fairness, and I'm not, not advocating one way or the other, I'm saying, but we have been exploring other avenues for two and a half, three years. As you well know, you've been there. And I'm not trying to argue, or not trying to, I'm just saying that we, it's not likely we've been sitting back waiting for this day to come. Up until last week, we still were exploring other avenues.
Well, I'd like to ask the city right up front if they would consider helping us during our need until we get this resolved with Lumina and know where we stand going forward. And we have to go to the city council to ask that question, and so will you.
And my response would be exactly that. That is an issue that would have, have to come before the city council.
Thank you, Mary. Anything else, gentlemen? Well, I guess we need to make a decision what we want to do on this item. Does anybody have an idea what they want to do on this item at this time? Does anybody have an idea of what they want to do on this item at this time?
Hey, we do vote to close it, and it does pass. When do we call it closed?
October the 1st is what we have listed here, which is the end of this year, which would be midnight, September 30th, is that correct, October 1st?
Yes.
And like you brought up, we need to find out what the legal, for sure, if we're going to get sued for rich out here. I'm, okay, I sympathize with every one, and sympathize with people losing jobs, but we've got to do something, something different. I heard, and we have checked out, ever since Kenneth and I have come to office three years ago, we've talked about other avenues, and they're not there. And Frank, again, he's done a great job. Sometimes I do not.
So, where do we want to go with this item, John? Have some today. If we go one direction, we need a motion. If we don't, it'll be-
Is it going to take a vote to close it to get something done?
I'm going to let it, Larry. I suggest that we table it today, then go out for RFPs, just see if we've got anything out there.
Not only that, I think that we need to take it before the city council, because they, 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 they lose interest because of sales tax and motel tax it generates.
Is that in the form of a motion, Kenneth? Did she want to go out for RFPs, starting in the next 30, 60 days? Yeah, I mean, attorney and-
We'd have to bring that back to the court to the RFPs.
So, right now, we just table it and move it forward. Mr. Ozrulik, you have something you want to say right quick? I said, if I'm going to do that, I'll let Mary, she'll be-
I'll table, I'll talk to her, I'll play with her.
All right. Is ever, is any objection to tabling this until we can bring it back to the court? Do you go out for RFPs?
No, sir.
I can set it up in 72 hours, not after we, if we set it today, if we set it to-
RFPs, how long? Two weeks too much?
We need to advertise for two weeks. You know, obviously, without it being today, I would think that the earliest meeting we could have would be Thursday or Friday, and that would put us, you know, we would have to advertise, we only have a weekly paper, so we have to run it for two weeks and then set the date for those RFPs to be returned and evaluated. So, I mean, we're probably looking at mid-August before we could actually take action on what was actually submitted and things of that nature.
And Larry, it takes some time to prepare the RFPs. You've got a lot in common.
Speaking for myself and hopefully on behalf of the court, we do not want to continue kicking this crazy can down the road. We've got to do something.
Well, being the bad guy here, I guess I will ask, entertain a motion for what's on the agenda for today to close it, and then we bring the other items back to the court. Or, we don't have that motion, and we table it until we get back to the court, probably Friday morning is going to be the quickest, 72 hours, because then we're supposed to see, and that'd be Thursday, Friday morning.
So, mid-August, right?
I think for the whole process is what I'm referring to, to, you know, Friday would be the vote to empower the county attorney and the auditor's office to draw up an RFP and get it into the paper next week. And, you know, to hear what that RFP, in a broad sense, what it needs to include, what we're looking for. Are we looking for an RFP to sell a facility, we're looking for an RFP to run the facility, you know, those type of things? The county attorney's going to need to make sure, you know, we have this RFP adequately documented so that when it goes to the paper, we cover all the aspects of it. You know, the RFP process is a little bit forgiving from the standpoint, we're not bound to like a bid. We, once we get the RFPs, we can, we can continue to negotiate with respondents and, you know, deal with things that come up. So, or just totally reject them outright. So, it does give us a little bit of latitude, but, but yes, the start to finish, you're probably looking at mid-August, at the earliest.
I guess we got to mid-August.
So, we want to table it for today, we'll discuss it on Friday before we put in the RFPs. Do you want me to put it back on there for a vote? We can do that Friday if we want to close it, decide if it's the way the RFPs are going, is that how?
Well, we won't know. All we do Friday is go out for a vote.
Authorizing the RFP and what items you want in it.
We also need to get it on the agenda for the city.
Counsel?
And of course, anything done with the city would be utilizing an interlocal agreement, which doesn't require bidding or anything because it's one governmental entity contracting with another.
I said the MOU, one of those, or interlocal agreement.
Mayor and city administrator, I guess, would you put me on your agenda again?
That would require us to call a special meeting.
As of y'all, if you want to call a special meeting, we're going to the regular meeting in August.
Okay, we would need to know what, well-
Would you mind having a special meeting on August 8th?
August 8th is the next regular meeting.
Larry just asked, would you mind having a special meeting, so if you could call a special meeting? Couple of us will attend.
We can do that, we just need you to have a very clear stated agenda item and, what, not before next Monday? I would say that for us, the earliest would probably be next Monday.
Brian just has a good idea, we could do a joint meeting right here if you wanted to, y'all could list it as having your meeting, but your council will meet here, we'll list a meeting, we'll have a meeting, and then we can talk out in the open, all of us. You'll have a city meeting, we'll have a county meeting.
We can go with what you just suggested.
Would Monday be fine with all y'all, we'll bring back next Monday? No, you might not know yet. All right, so we set it up.
Do you have a proposed time?
9:30 Monday morning. I'll have to maybe-
That, pardon? I may have some council members who may not be able to attend that because of work schedules, and I get back with you, we're probably looking, and that's why most of our special meetings are either on the weekend or they're after 5 o'clock because we do have a couple of council members that have job commitments. So, as far as setting a time, let me get back with you, let me ask, is the court willing to meet after work hours on 5:30 on a Monday evening?
We don't want to. Okay. You let me know how to work, and then we'll wait and post the agenda when you get back with me.
Okay.
And we won't even, do you still want to have our meeting on Friday for RFPs, or we'll just wait and talk to the city Monday evening, and then we'll go from there?
We have an agenda.
Okay, that'll work, and we can go do everything.
We can go ahead and prove it, not like it's going to jump out there the next day.
Right. Because Fridays, we're not going to gain much from Friday and Monday evening. Okay. All right, thank you. Boy, we have really been around this bush today. Thank y'all. Okay, so we're going to table this item, and we will call a special meeting on Monday, which I guess that's the 18th, more likely at 5:00 or 5:30 in the evening. We'll get that set up, we'll meet in the Mary and City Administrator. All right. Thank y'all. Item number six, we don't need to do until we talk about item number five. Item number seven, there'll be no action either until we settle, we'll go back to item number five. Thank y'all. You bet. Let's take a 10-minute recess. Well, I'm going to listen if he comes back or not.
He's out there, he's on strike, he's saying he's not coming until the-
There he is, tell you, Mr. Lewis.
Sorry, sorry, apologize for detaining the authority.
No problem, no problem. All right, so we'll reconvene in session, Commissioner's Court, July 11th, Monday morning, back in session at 10:40 a.m. Now, without, with that gone, we're down to item number eight, approved county treasurer's report. I have a motion. I have a second by Don. Any further discussion, questions, debate? All in favor of said motion, five for, zero against. Receiving approved monthly reports from all county departments.
I have a motion by Kenneth. A second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion?
All in favor of said motion, that's five for, zero against. Item number 10, approved budget transfers.
You received the budget transfers that were being proposed. Nothing really, we've had to move some money for the county attorney, we've had some outside legal expenses that have, that have needed to be paid, so we're taking that up the season subscriptionary, court reporting. We're going a little bit over budget on court reporting just because of the county courts and things of that nature.
Jury trials, special hearing, so on and so forth.
Sheriff, prisoner medical continues to besiege us a little bit, so we're continuing to pay for that and moving some stuff into the computer department, as you can see.
I have a motion by Kenneth, a second by John, approve the budget transfers. Any further questions or debate? All in favor of said motion, five for, zero against. Item number 11, approve remainder of county bills. I think- Make a motion to approve the remainder of bills.
Do you have something you don't want to say?
Well, in addition to the emails I sent, we had two that were reimbursed through payroll, Thomas Cochran, $17.28, Todd Livingston, $29.78. And then, of course, I sent you that, the one item about the going around the purchasing policy, so I just wanted you to make sure that you guys were aware on that, on that one, so, and that's in what you're approving as well.
That was 350, correct?
350 times six.
Six.
Yes.
$1,785.
After discount.
After discount.
Yes.
I like it, just count. I have a motion by Kenneth. I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or comments? All in favor of said motion, that's five for, zero against. Kenneth?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a second by Don. All in favor of said adjournment, that's five for, zero against. Would you like another break to get set up?
I think we did look at the schedule before we do the budget hearing.
Don, we'll take another five, 10-minute break while Brian gets set up, and then we'll come back into the budget discussions. It is 10:50, July 11th, Monday morning, we are going to have a county budget hearing to order, that directed show which I forgot to do earlier, which was present, Mary Holsey, John Curtis, Danny Tuna, Chris Wood, and Alan Grant. So, item number one, I guess back to you, Brian.
Here, as promised, I've given, prepared a list of the capital outlay requests by department that have been submitted. Again, this has not been vetted or shrunk down in any, in any way, this is actually what has been requested by the department. In addition to this, number, during the budget hearing, you had requested the JP's office to, they had come in with a number, and this body had requested that they go down to $500. It wasn't specifically identified for anything, so I didn't put it on this list, but just to say that in addition to this list, you've got $500 sitting in JP's department for capital outlay, that's in there. The other thing that I did is I went through, even though I sent you the, excuse me, I went through and updated the line items, the placeholders, even though I had you bring last budget hearing's budget in, what I did is if they did not have any, I took it from $100 down to $10. That way, again, we achieved a little bit of savings there, so every department that did not have any type of capital outlay request, I went ahead and marked those down to $10 on their budget sheet. So, that wasn't enough justification to reprint this whole package, especially with the unknowns that were going to be discussed during the first meeting this morning, so I didn't want to waste the paper and toner just to update that, I figured I did tell you that verbally. This is the, this is the Sears catalog wishlist of capital requests, and I guess that's probably
And all underneath Sears Department except for Tahoe, Tahoe payment is a moving target right now, correct?
Yes, sir, the, as far as being discretionary. Yes, sir, the Tahoe payment is not discretionary, but everything else in that list obviously is discretionary.
We talked about as we move forward and, yeah, okay.
And the same would go for the pro shop, the golf cart payment of $95.327 is not discretionary. And then in the sheriff's office, the ladder truck payment is not discretionary.
Fire, fire EMS.
Fire EMS, what did I say? Sheriff, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry.
That's the last one.
This will be the last one, yes, sir. Yes, sir, that will be the last one.
So, the three that are not up for debate, the Tahoe payment, the ladder truck payment, and the golf cart payment.
That's correct.
How many years left on Tahoe?
The, for which one?
Tahoe payment.
Tahoe, this will be the last one on the Tahoe. The Tahos were a three-year payment, and the golf carts are a five-year payment, so we still got three years to go on the, after this one, we'll still have three years on the golf carts.
I talked to Jill about the Tahoe payments, what if it gets out of there, whatever, whatever we ask for. Some of this going on.
Well, if you notice on the carry-on utility vehicle, I did mark it down, he had requested five, and I've got that there, asterisk, that five units were requested, that's the price of one. I thought it might be better than to, to let's just do, maybe like we do the SCBA's at the fire department, maybe let's budget one a year and replace them over a five-year period. The ones that we're, he's asking for replacement, I think are close to 14 years old, so, I mean, obviously, they, we can hold them together and keep them, so over a five-year period, I felt like that that was a way that we could trim, you know, $40-plus thousand off the request right there, so that's, but I did want to make you aware against the asterisk why that's changed, I went ahead and marked that down to one unit, and then we can, we can do a structured phase in on those.
Once again, I feel like this wishlist, yeah, we've done budgeted, but we've been on, suspended till April.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. You know, there's additional constraints that we can put on there, you know, outside the note payments, which are all due in October, November, but outside of those, absolutely. You guys would give me direction on, you know, when and, you know, when you want it to, how long you want it to be under lock and key, so to speak. it to, how long you want it to be under lock and key, so to speak, and that's exactly how we will do it.
So, just being a lock and key, do we tell you not?
And it's, and it's still for this year, sort of, yes, sir.
Yeah, for this year also.
Have you talked to, or Judge, have y'all talked to him, talked to him since the last meeting?
Not really officially. I've, I've had some, kind of just some talks with them, a couple of them, and just told them that, you know, that it's presented and, and we'll, we're going to continue to, to look at it and do some, do some trimming as they're used to, but I did not give any specifics to them, so, sir.
As I said earlier, I met with Pam Baker and asked her, I think it's right, Ms. Baker?
Pam Baker.
Yeah, Pam Baker, and I think the lady that's her assistant is?
Vanessa.
Vanessa Baker. Yeah, I talked to them, Larry, about cutting deeper into their budget, what they could do, and I just heard they have done that a few thousand, I don't have much.
So, you've got to respond?
Yes, yes.
Well, it's like this, you requested there's a look at Pam Baker's and we did.
Yes.
We might come up with maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And I need direction on this with the genealogy, because I went over and talked to them, told them after October 1st, they may not have their part-time help, they may be only working on volunteers, and that they're discussing like they do on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Do you want me to continue on that path? That is on October 1st, we do away with our time gentleman? Okay. Because I went over once and discussed with them and we'll go again.
I also feel everyone part of it, I think there was a bottom calling out, having failed out yet, but it's, and I don't agree with the auditor last meeting, I don't think it'll be all right, so it is. I mean, it's not.
Well, if you, as you segue to that, I sent out the cash report this morning for everyone to, to see. Hopefully you got your emails this morning. Our reserve balance as of June 30th is eight million, eight fifty-nine, seven fifteen and sixty cents. The general fund balance at this time on June 30th last year was actually twelve million, thirteen thousand, thirty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents, which means year over year, we're at a decrease of three million, one fifty-three, three sixteen. They owe us four, so had they paid, we would definitely be actually up. What was interesting was our net cash outflow for June had decreased down to five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six thirty-two, and I've updated, as I said I would, our forecasted cash flow, and we didn't go into reserves in June.
We did not?
We did not. We had higher than anticipated property tax payment come in at the end of the month, and so we actually are fifty-one thousand, twenty-two dollars ahead of our reserve balance, or above our reserve balance, right, at the end of June.
What did you say?
Fifty-one thousand, twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
So, so we're going to go in, thanks for this?
Actually, when, when the treasurer goes in there to print the checks y'all approved, we will be in reserves, but I'm dealing with June 30th.
June 30th is when we actually entered into it.
Correct. Last meeting, I told you we were probably going to hit it in June, and we did not.
Ten month into this fiscal year.
So, we're ten months into our, our, our budget year. We, we stayed out.
Fifty percent payment of what we're supposed to get.
Correct.
That's pretty good.
I'm pleased, so, you know, again, you know, I, I know that, that, and I don't want you to think that the auditors down here are saying that everything is sunshine and lollypops, okay?
Well, it's kind of what I heard last night.
That's not what you heard. What I heard was, but I, I, you know, you guys, I, I get the sense from you guys that y'all are painting this as, as all open source and leprosy, okay, because it's not. The, the question is not, are we going to get our money? The question is when, okay? We, we are going to get our tax money, okay? Now, the, the question is, when are we going to get it?
Okay, well, that's a big question. Now, we're spending a million a month to keep the door open.
Five, five hundred, your net cash outflow last month was five hundred and thirty-eight.
Well, an average.
Plus reminders.
Is it average a million?
The month before was six hundred and sixteen, and so, yeah. I mean.
Well, does it average a million a month?
Our expenses, which, where you're getting a million dollars a month is we have a twelve million dollar budget in twelve months, okay? But, what you've got to understand is we have other sources of revenue that are coming in to, to mitigate that, so we're not actually cash out a million dollars, we're.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
We're, we're net, we're six hundred thousand.
An operation, an operation discount is average of about a billion a month?
A billion a month in expenses, yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying.
But in, but in cash, net cash, six hundred thousand on average.
Anyway, I can't see that we keep going at even if the check was in the mail, which is not in the mail. We're going to get it when it pays, we're hoping, we're hoping.
I, I, you know, in all estimations, what the judge said earlier was, in fiscal year 18, I can't see them having any other legal options available to them. The, the clock will have tipped and run.
And what's the word of eighteen?
It all depends on when they get the appeals hearing done, because then that, that will also then set a time limit to where they can appeal from the appeals court, but, you know, it's, it's going to be done.
Say we got five million dollars tomorrow, I still think they need to go with the operation because that's just.
You don't mind if the budget stays as it started, but do you want operating expenses to go down?
I agree.
Yeah, I understand. I agree.
I, I'm totally with you. I mean, we are still, we are still paying. You know, I had, I had a conversation, I don't want to embarrass them publicly, but I had a conversation with a male descendant of my family, you know, about him carrying credit card debt, and I said, you know, I said, what's, what's very bad about this is that you're paying today on meals you ate three months ago. You know, I said, that's, that's really bad. Well, you know, for instance, you know, we've got a lot of things we're paying on based upon decisions that were made years ago.
True.
Okay? And, you know, the number one thing that comes to mind to me is, is our retirement percentage. We can't do anything about it, but, you know, as this court and previous courts authorize cost of living adjustments to retirees and, and buybacks and things like that, you know, it's added to our unfunded balance, which is why we're paying over fifteen percent retirement contribution, is because of decisions that were made as far back as 2010, and we're still paying for those things. So, you know, so to, to answer your question, I'm with you, I, I'm with you, but there's a difference between making decisions that are immediately felt and decisions that you make that are going to take time before they actually have a budget impact of relief. So, we've got to look at those things.
Well, it kind of says that we're going to have to continue to decrease because the big apple there is depreciating every year.
Agree? Interestingly enough, I read a opinion piece in the Waco paper by Brad Watson, who is their, their spokesperson, and he, they're making the case for building power plants in the Clinton County. They're having trouble getting the permitting, and, of course, he's laying out the program of how in the coming years, there's going to be an energy shortage and power plants are going to be at a premium, and I thought that was really interesting, because here it's all like they give it away. So, you speak out of two sides of his mouth, so I, I think as this depreciation thing, remember, depreciation is really not a component up there as much as it is revenue generation, so.
I think what Brad Watson is speaking of, the Lumina has some aging lignite plants in East Texas that they're no longer mining lignite and bringing, you know, blended coal out of Wyoming, and those units under, with the carbon ambition issues, probably has limited life on them. Once they, if they have major problems, they're probably not going to rebuild, but they're going to start building gas.
That's what, is it Trading House or something that they?
Trading House is shut down. It used to have a, a top plant there.
Well, he's projecting, or in his, in his opinion piece, he was projecting an energy shortage in the coming years, not today, but in the coming years, so.
Lumina put out an article how bright the future is for nuclear power.
We agree.
Go figure that.
Did you, did you have understood that? You said their income or what costs them to make their business is based on tax?
That, that is how they come up with their tax, their tax bill back?
What a little bit more I know is based on natural gas prices.
There, that is one of the factors that they utilize for their cost, yes, sir.
So, that doesn't fit.
Well, actually, if you've, if you've watched the spot price of natural gas over the last forty-five days, it has had an incredible rally. In fact, the, the price of natural gas on the market is upwards, I've been watching it, I get a spot price every day, and the futures market is really jumping right down in the last forty-five days.
Two dollars and eighty-three cents this morning. That's, that's good, because what Lumina tries to project is like at two eighty-three, they say that they, they spend twenty-eight, thirty is where they're at. They, they do a times factor of ten, so when it's down around a dollar thirty, they're looking at thirteen dollars. That sucks. The closer it is to thirty, the better it is for us. So, two point eight comes out to, you know, twenty-eight dollars, so that's good, but we need it over three dollars. Well, we're paying more at the pump, and natural gas movement's doing good.
And if you remember under oath, the accountants for Lumina testified that their average annual sales out there were in excess of a billion dollars a year, so, you know.
They just choose not to pay their taxes.
Right. You know, it, it would be unfair to, you know, there's three, and, and again, they discussed this in court, there were three methods of appraisal, one being historical cost, but that would be unfair to them. You know, sales, which obviously there's not, sales of power plant, nuclear power plant, so the only thing left is that income approach, and that's what has always been the, the case here.
Brian, I came to you with, to look at contributions from employees on insurance.
Yes, sir.
I know Big Evolven's has been working with the county hospital on that. If we looked at a twenty-five percent co-pay and fifty percent co-pay, what kind of savings do you think the county would incur on that?
Well, I, I would think that we would have some substantial savings, you know, in, in our proposal process right now, we're still waiting on our, our bids to come in. Once we get those bids, then we can start tweaking things like that, co-pay prices, you know, networks, those type of things to, you know, to see how they, they affect, but it does.
Do you have a ballpark for your?
No, sir, because I really don't even know what our renewal price is yet.
Okay, okay. But there could be significant.
Certainly. If, if you notice last year, that was one of the things we did, we increased our, our Dr. co-pay, and we also increased our deductible, and, and that brought the prices back down to, so that we did not have to have any type of budget increase of the ten thousand dollars that we put aside for all the, the health and, and medical related benefits that we have for the employees.
Make sure we're talking about the same, if I was to have to pay twenty-five percent of my monthly premium, that's, we're on the same page?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, you're talking about shifting some of the cost of the premium to the employee?
Correct.
Or the premium?
Now, that would not affect our premium rate, that would just be affecting our budget, okay?
For the budget here.
Right. And, you know, the other things that we look at is increase, shifting cost to the employee as far as per the plan to reduce our cost to the county. Increase deductibles, increase co-pays when they go see the doctor, those type things, so, so that it's burdening those who actually use the benefit, you know, higher drug costs, those type things, and, and it doesn't affect those that don't go to the doctor that often.
There's something else that I've looked into, we might think about it a lot, I'm sure.
The death penalty.
I hope I will pay for it.
Nine of two oh five on each budget.
Yeah, sir, if you, if you notice, I was anticipating this question, so thank you for setting me up on that. You can look at the screen. This is our rates that are going to be assessed to us for fiscal year 2017. The October, the, the reason we have the two different columns is because even though we have a September 30th year-end, TCTRS rolls on a calendar year. So, for fiscal year 17, October through December, we'll still be paying the current year rates, and then we'll be paying the new rates for January through September, so you can see that TCTRS has assessed us a fifteen point three eight percent retirement rate, and the only discretionary rate that we have there is the point four seven, which actually is decreased from point six four that we're currently paying, it will go down to point four seven. We're going to have a blended rate because I have to, what I have to budget is to handle the, the higher rate for October through December and, and things of that nature. Why is the fifteen point three eight percent so high? Well, the fourth quarter of 2015 had some significant stock losses that were passed to us, plus we're having this unfunded liability. If you look, I've tracked this back to 2006, our unfunded liability right now, pension liability, is four million, six, seven, sixty-five.
That's just ketchup, correct?
That is ketchup, yes, sir. That is the amount of, of losses that our fund has had through the stock market. That is also because of things that the court has approved. For instance, you can see, I've also documented 2007, the, the court passed a thirty percent CPI cola for our retirees. They did it again in 2008, 2009, and 2010, you passed a fifty percent cost of living increase. Now, what TCTRS likes to come in and say is, is, and they tell the court, hey, this is not going to affect your rate, you're not going to see this. Well, that's half true. It's not going to affect your rate right now. What they're going to do is they're going to charge you over the next twenty years for that, and that also adds to our unfunded. You know, unlike General Motors who has an unfunded pension liability, their unfunded pension liability is because of their decision not to pay it. We've paid everything that we've been assessed. This unfunded is simply an actuarial unfunding based upon the life of our participants in the plan and things of that nature, so, and it uses some assumptions, so, but this is how they, this is how they document to charge our rate is based on a twenty-year payback, so that's why our rate is so high. Now, in anticipation of the life insurance, I did a little analysis for you to let you see that our current plan, we cover life insurance not only for all of our active participants, but also for all of our retirees. When our, when a person retires from the county, we're still paying the life insurance for them.
Five thousand.
Five thousand dollars, okay? And that's what's that point four seven percent. Now, one option would be to change that to active employees only. Now, you can see what would happen to our rate if we did that this coming year. It would drop from point four seven to point two eight. I grabbed the payroll numbers, these are actual payroll numbers for 2013, 14, and 15 that the county had, and you can see the potential savings of making that change, of changing and taking it away from the retirees. So, I kind of did a three-year average, three-year average of five point four six six. The potential savings of making that change would be ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars a year. Then I also did another option down here is just to cancel the group term line for everybody. That would take our rate to zero, and then you can see using those same payroll numbers that you're looking at a potential savings of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. So, but, you know, there'll be, there'll be pushback, obviously. You're going to have some retirees contacting you if they make a change and, and things of that nature, so, I mean, I'm just, I'm just letting it out, just letting you know, okay? So, those are, those are a couple of options, but if you were, you know.
Let's don't take that on the same day we take the expo on.
Okay. Well, and, and, yes, that would actually have to come to court for approval to the change of the plan document, but, you know, it's, I wanted to give you some real numbers that it's not going to save a hundred thousand bucks, you know, it's going to save twenty-five, which is still substantial, don't get me wrong. You know, you can ask my children, they think, they know I've. You know, you can ask my children, they think, they know I'll lean over, pick up a dime, the parking lot.
I'll pick up a penny.
Do we have another life insurance?
Yes, we have forty thousand, that decreases as you age, you got sixty-five.
That takes out of our check.
No.
Oh, can I pay for it too, so we got two?
It's cheaper than this, though.
Okay, explain to me the life insurance that we provide.
From the tax, from TC DRS.
Would you tax?
Well.
On your W-2 is what you're talking about? Anytime you have life insurance that's in excess of fifty thousand dollars that's provided by your employer, you have to pay, you have to pay imputed income tax on the value above fifty. That's per IRS regulations. So, you know, because the two policies together, your TC DRS policy for active is based upon your salary.
Current year's income.
Right, that, that current year's income. And then this other forty, so combining those two together that our employer provided, obviously are above fifty, and therefore she has to, the treasurer has to put some W-2 income for that being provided to stay within the IRS regulations.
So if we dropped to one, then we probably wouldn't be in that category.
That is correct, if you drop to just the forty, or, you know, as we're looking at this employment, because the rates are cheaper, you know, an alternative would be to, to have Hickenbottom's look at bumping that up a little bit, you know, maybe getting rid of TC DRS and going from forty to sixty or something, which wouldn't be that very much, or fifty, so that she wouldn't have to do the imputing.
Yeah, they, they wish it had to.
Well, no, I'm just saying, you know, the, yeah, if she stays at fifty, then there's no imputing of income.
Well, and anybody could purchase life insurance through ADLAC or whatever, and pay for it out of their pocket if they wanted more, and that wouldn't be.
Is there any way you can take care of the retirees and take care of the active?
I would bet that because of the age range of the retirees, nobody would touch it. I could, I could almost assure you of that.
So if you hurt them, they probably won't be able to get it at their age, and they retired thinking they wouldn't have it until they die.
Well, we've al, we've always tried to let them know that that's a permissive benefit, so, and it could go away.
And it's only bad enough, no?
Yes.
And if you're on a fixed income, that's about a seven thousand dollar barrier.
And, and, and we've got a lot of retirees, and, and obviously, as the retirees, I mean, TC DRS computes the rates based upon the usage, obviously. And, and obviously, that's why it's such a significant discount if we only go to active, because, you know, we don't have that very many active people that, that die. I mean, I can think of one in the last couple, three years, and it was a bus and automobile accident. And, and so they know, I mean, they're insurance companies, they play the odds better than Vegas, so, you know, they know that chances are they're not going to have on active employees, if you're active enough to work, you're probably not going to kill over debt. However, as retirees are in the older segment, they're going to utilize that benefit a lot more, and, and so that's why the costs are therefore associated for that.
But in good conscience, now, this is personal, of course, I can't sit on board doing something for the expo and then going after the retirees, I can't do that. Just personal. There's no way. Right, hopefully.
And I might get my salary.
And I don't want you to.
I wonder if that might go up today?
And I don't want you to, Commissioner, you, you.
Well, that was presented last week.
You charged, Commissioner, Commissioner, you charged, this group charged me to come with every possible option.
Well.
And that was one of the options.
I know that was one up.
And I would be remiss if I chose.
Now we know, now we feel, now we know.
I would be remiss if I simply said, well, I don't want to bring one because it'd be uncomfortable, I want to be able to truthfully say I brought every possible option today.
I think that we got to look at twenty-five thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, either, we're not dropping. Not to make them seem, they, they keep that in the picture, right?
Well, and that would be something that we could add back at a later time, maybe?
Yeah, I think that'd be a question that TC DRS would ask.
And not being rude, but that's why we're in this situation, we're in the day, because we've had to do things ever since the election.
Yeah, we're not only fighting Luminant, we're fighting previous courts also.
We are.
We're fighting, we're fighting two problems.
And that's a debate for the government that did this to us or not, it's our responsibility now to do something.
Right. You know, it's a, you know, it, it's a, it's a perfect storm situation when you start talking about retirement benefits, too. I mean, like I said, you know, we pay the price because of a bad stock market year. I mean, you know, again, something no one on this panel can control, and, but we pay the price for it because we've made forward obligations to our retirees, and, you know, a bad year on the market translates into a bad year on our, on our retirement rate. So conversely, a good year on the market would translate to a lower rate for us, because we will have some gains in there, and we'll start wiping away some of that unfunded liability.
And hopefully we can contribute to get paid, you know, ketchup.
Right, and, you know, so that's the answer, when, I know, I know that some of you have had retirees approach you about cost of living increases and things of that, you know, that is why we, you know, we haven't and can't, is because, you know, we're already trying to pay, we're still trying to pay for the increases back in 2006, you know, and, and so it's a, it's a.
We're in ketchup, Luminant.
Absolutely. So I, I think it would be inappropriate for us at this juncture, as we're talking, to, to incur additional expense that future courts are going to have to deal with, so. But I wanted to have the numbers ready for you.
Yeah, you're right.
Now, before the next budget meeting, hopefully I'll be meeting with Suzie and getting updated payroll numbers based upon grade and step and all of that, and anticipated cost longevity for certain employees and things, of course, this court has limited longevity for new attainees at fifteen hundred dollars, and frozen anybody over that, so, but we may have some employees that are starting this coming year. And then, so the next iteration of budget worksheet that I produce, hopefully we'll have to do updated salary numbers, which will then filter through with retirement and things of that nature.
And we may have to make a visit that longevity again, too. When do we want to try to have another budget hearing? Sometime during next week? You want to do it after the eighteenth, we're going to meet you with the city?
Yes.
Nice, we'll do it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
That will keep your schedule, Wednesday morning?
Start that out.
Oh.
And that is some stuff the city throws at us.
Would that give you enough time to change your place tomorrow?
I guess I'd like to stress again, each department did, but we're going to, personally think we're going to cut. I know we trimmed last year.
Well, and if, and if you guys want to take and assign a couple of departments, or take a couple of departments to deal with capital, like requests, and, you know, that's an area that obviously that could be looked at.
May not be fair, we've sent the department here.
Well, I mean, the other option would be to have the department again during the budget meeting, and, you know, discuss the list or whatever.
Is there not a question?
I'm just wanting to know a direction from you, yes, sir.
I think we're on a break.
You're looking at treasurer, sheriff, RMS, road bridge, expo, golf course, NIT, is that correct?
Golf course, both of them, Jeff and I.
Okay, we can do this at the same time if you want to.
I mean, they could all come in next Wednesday, I mean, I don't see it being, can I do mine today, I won't be here next Wednesday.
No, we'll do it when you're not here. We'll see a big cut, there we go.
They don't have cuts, they don't have to go in, they just.
Really, all Mark has is thirty-six thousand, basically, for new equipment for the new truck, because the latter truck, obviously, is not discretionary, so that's, so if you want to state your case for your.
Come on up, Mark. Set the timer.
Thirty-seven.
Time's up.
We got a military truck that we are refurbishing on a grant, and we're paying for the welding and the paint job already with this year's budget. The thirty-six thousand dollars historically is what we have spent putting one of these trucks in service and includes all the equipment, because the military truck doesn't come with any firefighting equipment on it, and that's, it's a, I believe it's a hundred and seven thousand dollar vehicle, or a hundred and four thousand dollar vehicle, and we're asking for thirty-six thousand dollars to put the equipment on it, so we can buy fire.
Do we, to accept this, do we have to put the money?
It has to be in service within six months, and will be, I think, four months, when budget hits, we'll be four months into it.
But you're asking for the money out of this year's budget?
No, no, I'm asking for.
Thirty, thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand dollars in next year's budget, because by the time it's painted and everything, it'll be ready to go, get the equipment put on it, which will be at the four month mark. Now, we could, we could spend the money out of this year's budget and take it completely out of next year's budget, and that would take a lot of stress off me, because it's going to be sitting for two months, not having anything done to it, waiting on the money. You know, we have to have it in service by the six month mark, or we lose the truck. So that might be something y'all want to consider, it certainly would help me sleep better at night.
It's a spend it today, spend it tomorrow, same dollar amount, just from a documentation standpoint.
Still have to come out in reserve?
It's come to that somewhere, yes, sir, so, yes, but.
I think I'll get the truck.
After we've paid to paint it and weld it and everything, yes.
No, I mean, if we don't do it in six months, they want to throw it back.
Right. I mean, you guys already agreed to that contract when we took delivery of it. But it's replacing, or it's, it's, it's taking a nineteen sixty-three model truck and putting it into reserves off the front line, so it's a good deal for us. We've got, we got our money's worth out of the last truck.
Here again, strictly opinion, if we're going to have to spend the money no matter what, and I decide to spend the money, we might as well do it this year before I put first and take care of it, put it in service, and delete this off the.
You're asking, we have to do it.
Yeah, we're going to do it.
No, I don't want to, we're just spending money this year, so we're going to.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Have to, but, again, like life insurance, twenty-five thousand, or something like that.
And, and like I said, on the TC DRS, remember, they're a calendar year, so a change you make would not take effect until January one. So even if you decided to eliminate the life insurance, we would still be paying life insurance through twelve thirty-one of this year, so we would, we would not be able to eliminate a complete twenty-five.
Three months.
We would still have to have three months, yes, sir. So, again, it's, it's.
First year is not as good as the second year.
It's always the case, there, there's always a delay impact. I mean, it, it, very few things can, you know, with, with an entity this size, very few things can you do that will have an immediate impact, I mean, it just, it's just the way it is.
Here's, here's my ace in the hole, I'm going to pull out two. Brian's also, we have a new engine coming that we got on a grant, also, it'll be here in August, and we've been awarded a twenty thousand dollar grant for this brush truck, skid unit. So what I was working out with Brian is, we spend this thirty-six thousand dollars on the brush truck, use those receipts to justify the twenty thousand dollar reimbursement, I'm not, that's why I'm not asking you for money for the new engine, we take that twenty thousand dollars to buy the radios and the equipment for the new engine. So kind of look at it as, we're also getting a free twenty thousand dollars, if we spend the thirty-six, we're getting twenty thousand of it back. Ace in the hole.
Want them to look over here while I do this over here?
No, I'm, I'm being, I'm, I've always been open about my plans.
Yeah, now it's, now it's totally recorded.
Well, I mean, reimbursement's reimbursement, you're spending thirty-six thousand. But that, that keeps me from having to ask for a lot of money for the new engine.
But when, ask you for an action?
No, sir, yeah, he can't, it's a workshop, so. He's.
But it may be a direction we should turn to now. Yeah, it's time for a long time.
Is that it?
Yeah. Thanks a lot, Mark.
So, you know, we're, you know, I guess with, with Mark, it kind of gives you a window in the back, there's still some adjustments that can be made, there's still some things that we can do, and, and we can get it, and can continue to make trims. I mean, it's obviously, two years ago, the trims were much bigger in size because there was more opportunity for them. As we've, as we've trimmed and trimmed and trimmed, the, the opportunities become relatively smaller, but there's still some there, we'll still be able to do it.
That's where it goes back, that we may not be in the same services we got today.
Great, great, and, and to, to achieve a bigger impact, absolutely.
I mean, not, not looking for the big impact, but looking to pay our bills, what we need to pay.
Understood. And, and, and such with the expo, it's important to realize that, you know, it is not going to be a zero. You know, no matter what, there's going to be costs, I mean, there's, there's costs to turn things off, and, you know, I mean, employees, number one, we talk about that, but, you know, there's other costs that we, we have to take care of things, and so, because regardless as to whether the building's being used or not, it's a county-owned public building, and we've got to, you know, make sure that it's safe, and we can't expose ourselves to that kind of liability, so security alarms, smoke alarms, all that kind of good stuff. So, but, but yes, there's opportunities. And the whole, and the auditor still remains hopeful that we're going to get our money, Commissioner, and, and then some.
We got reserves to do.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you, we will eventually get our money, but it's going to be brushed out before we get it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and it may, you know, it may cause us to do some things we don't want to do, I know, I know I'm not one to just jump in the debt, but if we have to to, to cover a hole for six months, then, you know, but, or go foreclose on a power plant, you know, I mean.
We got to do things and borrow money.
I, I agree that that would be option Z, but, you know, it's there, and, and again, if I'm paying three and getting twelve, I'm, I'm still bringing nine to the table, that's, that's not bad in this interest rate market.
And what's next?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Brother, this week we don't find out what the rent value is for the power plant? We don't be right back in this lawsuit business again?
Yes, sir, more than likely.
It's not looking to.
It's not paying off.
I would, I would agree that, from a cash perspective, it's not paying off very well, yes, sir. From wins and losses, we're good, but.
To get back to. Winning's breaking us.
This sense, due to plan, twenty years, whatever. This county has provided great services to the town. Some people would disagree, but then. We may have to get back to. We may have to get back to what service we have to provide, and maybe not top quality
Well, you know, I, I would think that everything would have to be examined. I, I mean, I know, like in roads.
Okay, that's what I love to do in this book, get the same every time. And you're right, roads.
Well...
Roads are going to be took care of, not like the county.
Well, but you know, and that becomes the question, I, I mean, I'm not an expert in roads by any stretch, but, you know, there, there comes a point when, if you, if you scale back quality, you're going to spend an equal amount in frequency over the time period to, to even maintain a lesser quality road, I, I guess is, is my question, and I would want to know, you know, if it's, if, if we do it substandard...
I don't understand what you're saying.
I'm saying if we don't build it as nice, okay?
We can't afford to, so that's, that's not an option.
I, I understand, but, but are we really achieving a savings, is my question?
Huge. If you don't have the money, you don't have it, that's, that's it.
Right, but I mean, am I, am I saving two to spend two next year?
If you don't have the money, you don't, you don't get that good money. And I think that's maybe what we're going to do. You mentioned last meeting that this county may not be like we know it is.
As it is today.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We're going to have to wake up to that.
Now, the bad topic going on on this board we've talked about is, as you're, as you're bringing those expenses down, those services you decide that you do want to keep, taxes have to go...
That's true.
Taxes have to go in accordance...
That's true.
With expenses and cuts to make it work, so, we have to also look at taxes. I mean, I'm not talking 10, 15, 20 cents, but I'm talking, if you have to generate more revenue, that's where it's at.
And I agree, you know, taxes will have to, you know, will have to increase, but...
As one comes down, that goes up.
Everything we can, possible.
Right.
First, before we know what taxes will open, right?
I agree, no, you're right. Do everything you possibly can within reason before you raise taxes to produce more income or revenue. I understand that far from it?
Yes, sir. Or segregating part of your tax rate for specific projects, such as having a road bridge tax, or a library tax, or that way, the general fund tax remains constant, but you're shedding off a penny to take care of roads and bridges. You know, there's certain opportunities there, and we can create a road and bridge fund for that. I mean, that, you know, I'm just saying, there's opportunities, there's, there's, everything's on the table.
It's got to be a difficult one.
And, and which is why I presented what I presented last time, not to offend or challenge anyone. That's never my, I, I hope you would know that. That's never my, the way I operate.
This comes to Mark. Just get Mark. What's my picking on you? He didn't get... He didn't hear what I'm saying.
He didn't catch it.
I mean, he lost sleep on it. He just lost back very good.
Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you giving back 15% of your budget.
I mean, I, I would never want anyone up there to think that I purposely try to offend you, because that's not, that's not who I am.
When you come close.
Well, I, my apologies. I, publicly, I apologize to you.
Need to bow down to all of us.
I apologize to this whole group.
Anything else you want to discuss today? What I'm leaving here with, I need to go back to genealogy, talk to them, go back to Sam Baker, talk to her. Brian and I will do what we can, where we can, we'll make sure that the party...
Employee, company of insurance.
Where, what's our due date on those? Okay, so, we're, we're still waiting on the insurance part of it, but we'll, we'll also talk with, we'll make sure department heads are here.
Yeah, I just, I want some number.
I, I mean, I can base you some numbers based upon this year's premium.
No, if you don't have that soon, then I'd be fine, I wouldn't wait.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I mean, if we just simply say, for instance, that, that, you know, we've been budgeting $10,000 per full-time employee for health and dental benefits and things of that nature, you know, you decide how much of that you want the employee to cut, and that would be an equal cut on the, you know, the other thing would be to maintain health and eliminate dental, maybe so that they can still have health provided. You know, there's, there's opportunities there, again.
And if we put those opportunities on paper, then we can see...
Absolutely, and when those proposals come in, it'll be broken down, how much is the dental premium costing, you know, how much is the health, and then, and then again, you know, we can tweak those things for out-of-pocket to the employees...
Right.
To, to, to do that. And then the same on, on the life insurance, we can see what they would offer us for a $50,000 policy through the open market on our, our employees, and then tell TC DRS, come January 1, cut it and be done. I mean, so every, everything, and I, you know, I'm with you, everything's, there's no sacred cows, I mean, we're...
Anything else?
When we don't set this up to meeting, I would...
Be Wednesday morning at 9:30, which I think is the 20th, I believe it's July 20th.
And a 2:00 and 10:00 open.
Cool, I understand.
Yes, sir.
We realize you may not be...
The 20th.
All right. And we'll set the other up as soon as Sam and City Minister lets me know, we'll do that in Monday evening, 5:30. I'll try to do it as early as possible, I don't know when, there are two guys at work to be here.
The joint meeting, really, as I was talking to the county attorney, is perfect because it allows all y'all to be here without any infractions on open meetings.
There you go.
The possibility.
No way breaking any rules, yeah.
Yeah.
We never, any of us do it intensely at all.
Right, I mean, and this, this protects you, this protects you so that if somebody has a question, you don't have to look in the room to see if there's already three of you, you know, it's kind of messy.
We'll probably put them on the front row, maybe, or bring in more chairs, or we can all interact together, and then the audience can be behind them.
Susie and I will walk through, sit on the back row.
Goodbye.
No, no, you're not getting out that, no, because you're going to have your back to them. He put in a armored plate in his back this morning.
Anything else? Kenneth, I guess it's your turn. I think most of the adjourned is to let in here. I have a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
And have a second by Don, all in favor, it's by far, zero against. Thank you, gentlemen, for your patience. And the budget worksup is over at about 11:42.